Time is now 1:19 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The regular meeting is reconvened. Liz, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limits so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin public participation with the persons that are physically in the room with us today and then move to those in the queue online. Okay, the first person in the room today is Carla Boyd. Go ahead and come up to the table and sit right there at the end, and then you can begin your three minutes whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you. I'm here today to talk about a critical bill initiative called the Seizure Safe Schools Act. My name is Carla Boyd, and I'm the mother of a 21-year-old daughter with incurable drug-resistant epilepsy. Lane was diagnosed in the sixth grade, and we became very close with the educators and staff in our school system in East Grand Rapids as she progressed. They were our lifeline during some very dark times. And as a member of the Epilepsy Foundation of Michigan Board of Directors, I'm here today to also represent the almost 110,000 people living with active epilepsy in our state. 14,000 of these are children. Epilepsy is greater in prevalence than cerebral palsy, multiple sclerosis, and Parkinson's disease combined. This impacts a very large student population. And most people aren't aware of that prevalence because it is sadly still very stigmatized. Epilepsy also kills people, about 50,000 people a year in our country. The foundation seeks to help equip our schools to both recognize the many types of seizures that occur, and there are over 40 of them, and how to respond so that our school personnel feel supported when they confront these emergencies, and they will. And also, very importantly, we want to create an environment that allows students with seizures to learn and thrive and remain in school. There are four components of the bill I'd like to go over. The first element is that all school personnel would take a seizure recognition and first aid training every two years. This is critical because we know that one in 26 will develop epilepsy and one in 10 people will have a seizure in their lifetime. And not all seizures look alike and have the same treatment. Again, there's over 40 of them. And this is one reason why it's so important that school personnel can recognize when a seizure is happening and then know how to administer the proper first aid. My daughter was misdiagnosed for two years when the reality was she was having over a dozen seizures an hour. It only would have taken one person to recognize this. It's also intentional that we are not limiting this training to educators, rather to all school personnel. Seizures can happen any place, any time, whether the playground, the hallway, the lunchroom, the bus. And the Epilepsy Foundation, together with the CDC, has developed a web-based training that we're offering to the state to use for free. It's available from the Epilepsy Foundation online or we can provide a live instructor via webinar. And the time to compete varies, but it's estimated to be around one hour. Continuing education credits are also available for Certified Health Education Credits, and we provide a certificate. The second element of the bill would require that every student with an epilepsy diagnosis have a seizure action plan and that that would be available to any school personnel that a student might come in contact with. This plan outlines important information like what types of seizures they have, what it looks like, potential triggers, treatments. And these plans are typically developed between the patient and their medical professionals. And it's a roadmap to keep these students safe. Also, there's precedent for this as Michigan currently requires similar action plans for asthma, allergy, and diabetes. Very quickly, the third element will be that at least one full-time individual working at the school.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I can also provide this in writing to everyone if it's of interest.
It can be distributed.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, next up is Bree Morgenberg.
Oh, sorry. Good afternoon. My mom and dad raised me to stand up against bullies. And so today I hope to do that because I'm going to say that some of you here are bullies and you actually discriminate against many parents in the school system. You support Jim Crow. Yes, I said, you support Jim Crow. You support wokeness, which is not social justice. You are supporting white racism and discrimination against Christians. You support Jim Crow. You support pedophiles when you support sexualization and desensitization of our children. You discriminate against child safety and welfare when you support pedophiles. And you are supporting pedophiles to pursue our children when you create environments for children to be predisposed to dropping boundaries of protection. Would you make sure that a Jewish family doesn't want their child to participate in the Holocaust lesson, be able to opt their child out with an alternative offered? Sure, you would, and of course, you should allow them to opt their child out. Yet, you stonewall concerned parents and you bully them even after we have pled over and over to have the same choice for our family beliefs and for our fundamental right to direct the care and education of our child. You discriminate against children and deem them unworthy of the fundamental right to safety. Stay in your lane and stop using this time here to push your beliefs, such as beliefs even about in-home gun control that you went on and on the last board meeting about. Have you ever woke to an intruder in your home? Have you ever woke to somebody over your bed getting ready to strangle you? And if you did, would you be able to grab your locked-up weapon very quickly? No, you would be completely defenseless, the same way that our children are in school. Do you think that the law is going to stop criminals and the mentally insane from obtaining one or using a gun or other means of harm? No, they are criminals and they are insane. You're not stopping them. You are discriminating against the vulnerable as you remove their ability to protect themselves. So while our government is busy spending millions of dollars over to Ukraine and spending money right here in Michigan for the Chinese Communist Party, who's protecting our children? Why do we not have five officers in every single school to protect our most vulnerable? You support criminals and you discriminate against our children, against Christians, and you discriminate against whites. You support racism. You support Jim Crow. You support discrimination. You do not support our fundamental rights. Explain that to Michigan. And I just want to say to all of the daughters, I hope that you stand up like Riley Gaines and you stand up for your equal opportunity and your fundamental right to equal opportunity and do not accept and do not back down to a bully. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is everyone in the room today. We can move to the people online or on the phone. Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, yes.
Hi, can you please state your name, where you're calling from, and then you can feel free to begin your three minutes?
All right. This is Amanda Whitehead, and I'm calling from Harbor Springs, Michigan.
Thank you. Go ahead and begin.
Okay, let me, I have the... So my thoughts are about the upcoming vote on the approval of the teacher preparation standards. I was part of that committee that worked on that, and I just wanted to give some of my thoughts. My thoughts are easily aligned with a position statement from the National Council of Social Studies dated 2018 toward responsibility, social studies, education, and that respects and reaffirms Indigenous peoples and nations. I've added some information of my own, but some of the contributions came from these two NCSS statements. I've used these documents regularly while facilitating teacher professional development and working with multiple educational entities. I also helped with the rewrite and revamp of the Michigan social studies standards for students. And we knew that the next step as tribal educators was to make sure that the teacher preparation standards are aligned with our student standards that were approved in 2019. I wanted to make mention that anytime local, state, and federal is mentioned, tribal is now included. This is working towards ending the erasure of tribal civics in governance and K-12 education. I believe since all education in the U.S. and Michigan takes place on Indigenous lands, I believe that well-prepared teachers of social studies must recognize the responsibility of social studies education to respect and affirm Indigenous peoples, nations, and sovereignty. Well-prepared social studies must commit to expand more accurate learning opportunities for students at all very levels that emphasize the sovereignty and self-determination of Indigenous peoples and nations, past, present, and future. Studies show that social studies education often perpetuates a false understanding of history and trivializes the past and current experiences of Indigenous peoples and nations. For example, in two studies of state-level U.S. history standards, researchers found Indigenous peoples and nations largely were excluded from the telling of history after 1900. Indigenous sovereignty is an essential component of civics education. Historical and contemporary examples of infringement of the sovereignty rights of Native nations exist in part due to the disregard of tribal sovereignty, nationhood, and citizenship, especially when teaching in our schools. The new additions and improved standards for teachers add on to generations of Inishna'wak educators working to bring more accurate representation to Michigan public schools. I do this work in honor of my ancestors and my family that have long been omitted from school curriculum and standards. One thing I really made sure to include was boarding schools, knowing where they are located. It's not good enough to merely mention them. Our Inishna'wak families were stolen and forced into educational structures that often did not align with our life ways, that often plagued Native people and continued to plague Inishna'wak with lasting pain for varieties of neglect and abuse. Boarding schools are not something of the long lost past. For example, in Harbor Springs, many local residents do not understand a boarding school within the backyard until the 19th day.
Thank you for your three minutes.
All right, me good.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Is that okay?
Yes, can you please state your name, where you're calling from, and then you can begin your three minutes for public comment?
Sure, my name is Anthony Tooth Francis. I'm calling from Rochester, Michigan, or Rochester Hills, Michigan, and I'll start.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm a committee member for the Social Studies Teacher Education Standard Creation, a professor of teacher education, and a parent of children in Michigan schools. Our committee consisted of social studies teachers, professors, consultants, and others. We took great care to build from the work done by social studies experts throughout the country, and we listened carefully to local experts and representatives. We spent months drafting and redrafting these standards to land on the set you see before you and will vote on today. We believe these standards balance all of these viewpoints carefully and create a manageable approach for teacher prep programs throughout the state. I would like to address two specific comments from board members at the last meeting. First, there was a question in the last board meeting on whether these standards were apolitical. I'm not sure apolitical is a proper term here. A large portion of social studies is studying the political processes and institutions we have built as a nation with a focus on citizens' rights, roles, and responsibilities in that system. By very nature, social studies cannot be apolitical. I think the word we should use here instead is nonpartisan. Skilled social studies teachers don't seek to, as one person in that meeting put, "develop the identity of children." The social studies objective is to give adolescents the tool to develop their own perspectives and their own identity. I remind you, these are students that will be on the verge of having the right to vote. They need to understand how to navigate their role as a voter in a democratic republic. Our only goal in these standards was to help the next generation of Americans understand their place in the governance of this nation and do so in a nonpartisan way, which I believe we accomplished. Second, there was a question by the same board member about the standard that discussed helping students understand the, quote, "changing points of agreement and disagreement amongst experts." This is what those who don't understand the discipline of history might call revisionist history. That term does not make sense. The very nature of history is tentative. In other words, all history is revisionist history as new evidence is found or new interpretations of old evidence are asserted. Just because one narrative has become a dominant narrative does not mean it's objective truth, immune to be challenged. Other stories matter. Other interpretations of familiar stories matter, even if they are from less powerful groups. Our committee built these standards to help new social studies teachers understand the tentative and careful nature of historical knowledge and all human knowledge in general. These standards to encourage educated people to carefully examine their current conclusions about the world and constantly pine for new ways to improve their understanding. When we said changing points of agreement and disagreement amongst experts, that's what we meant, to help our students and teachers adopt a deeper and more thoughtful understanding of the world, particularly in such a critical topic as social studies. As a whole, a committee, as a committee, we are convinced that we accomplished this arduous task set before us by the MDE
Thank you for your comments.
and we look forward to vote. Thank you.
Have a good day. Caller, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Got it. If you could please state your name, where you're calling from, and then you can start your three minutes of public comment?
Yes, my name is Dr. Annie Whitlock, and I'm calling from Lowell. Since 2020, I have been a part of a group of social studies professionals and educators across the state to develop the teacher preparation standards for the 5'9" and 7'12" social studies teacher certifications, just like my colleagues, you heard, call in earlier. Just like K-12 teachers, us professors in higher ed also need to design programs and courses that meet high expectations from state-approved standards. After all, we're training the next generation of teachers, an incredibly important job in this age of teacher shortage and a tax on the profession. Soon you'll receive a copy of the standards that we revised after public comment. You have already seen a copy of the standards before this. And in your May meeting, you will be asked to vote to adopt them. And I'm here to encourage you to adopt these standards. We are all very proud of what we accomplished. These standards reflect the C3 framework recommended by the National Council for the Social Studies with an intention on inquiry-based instruction. They focus on preparing teachers in social studies content required in the K-12 social studies standards. They have an intention to preparing teachers to enact core teaching practices in social studies. They have an intention and commitment to preparing teachers who honor students' experiences and voices through diverse, equitable, and inclusive instruction that promotes classroom community. And most importantly, they feature multiple perspectives from teacher educators, K-12 educators, community members, tribal educators, and Michigan parents. Social studies teacher preparation standards are the last to be created after math, ELA, and science, which already puts our field at a disadvantage. Universities across the state are eager to begin designing social studies programs around these standards, but the program creation process is slow in higher ed. Once standards are adopted, it could still be one to two years before students are able to enroll in these programs. So it's very important that we keep moving forward. After reading the standards again and seeing our response to the public comment, I know you will see years of hard work that result in an excellent product that is good for Michigan's future teachers and their future students. And I look forward to seeing you adopt them in May. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, are there any other callers who have preregistered on the line today?
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you so much. That ends public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. It is 1:38, board, and we are at approval of minutes of regular and committee of the whole meeting of March 14, 2023, a regular board meeting. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes as written? Moved by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Lipton. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We could have a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. It is now 1:39. Next item on today's agenda is an enrollment update. And rolling into the room to do our enrollment update are our friends from SEPI. During this presentation, the Center for Educational Performance and Information, or SEPI, will provide an update regarding our 2022-2023 school district enrollment. We welcome our presenters, Mr. Mike McGordy, Director of the Office of Analytics and Reporting, and Ms. Lauren Paluta, PK-12 Data Manager in the Office of Analytics and Reporting. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. There will, however, be a brief test following the presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Good afternoon. We're glad to be back to talk about enrollment trends and about the data that we've collected this past fall and what it can tell us about these trends that we've been tracking over time. As Dr. Rice said, I'm Mike McGordy. I'm the Director of the Office of Analytics and Reporting at the Center for Educational Performance and Information. And with me is Lauren Paluta, our PK-12 Data Manager at SEPI. While Lauren and I are presenting this information to you today, it is the result of the work of a lot of our analysts and team members at SEPI. And we'd like to acknowledge their fantastic work on helping us put this presentation together. Today, we are covering statewide enrollment trends with respect to overall head count, new enrollments, exiting students, and shifts within public schools. It's worth noting first that these topics are complex and they deserve to be explored further than our charter and our capacity can allow. As you think about implications for education policy, we hope this presentation not only provides some useful information but also reminds you of the wealth of data and information that SEPI makes available for this sort of analysis while maintaining student privacy. Others can and do dig deeper into these data through mechanisms such as the MySchoolData website and approved research studies. Before we jump into all the graphs and charts that we brought with us today, we want to give you a reminder of the overall picture we brought to you last year. For more than a decade prior to the pandemic, Michigan's population had been declining, and with it, K-12 enrollment. After the large decline in fall of 2020 during the pandemic, there were some signs of recovery in fall of 2021. Now that we have an additional year of data, we can add that many trends, including total enrollment, have begun to stabilize towards pre-pandemic norms. The rest of this presentation will look at which trends seem to be stabilizing to the way things were prior to the pandemic. Before we can look at enrollment data, though, it's worth zooming in all the way, or zooming all the way out to consider Michigan's school-age population. This slide displays American Community Survey data pulled back to 2010. And these data show, on average, a 1% annual decline in Michigan's population of school-aged children ages 5 to 17 from 2010 to 2021. Compare that trend to the blue line here, which represents the official K-12 head count reported by districts to SEPI. Head count is the number of students enrolled on Fall Count Day and is one measure of enrollment. As of fall of 2022, we had 1.38 million students in the K-12 public schools, 0.6% fewer than in fall of 2021. As of fall of 2022, oops, sorry. There are two details we wanted to call your attention to. First, the pace of the average decline in K-12 enrollment was similar to the population trend decline shown on the previous slide. Secondly, the 0.6% change from 2021 to 2022 is similar to the average year-over-year changes we saw in Michigan's head count prior to the pandemic. Together, these two observations are evidence that the K-12 enrollment seems to be stabilizing. We know that the public education system serves more than just K-12 students, so what about the other age groups? Pre-kindergarten enrollment also seems to be following the trend prior to the pandemic. Last year, we shared with you evidence of a large rebound in fall of 2021 following a large decline in fall of 2020. This year, pre-kindergarten enrollment grew by about 6%, exceeding 46,000 children in total. The size of the change this year is much closer to the annual year-over-year change we saw that we were used to before the pandemic. On the other end of the age spectrum, we have 18- to 26-year-olds receiving special education transitional services. This is a smaller population, so changes in percentages will seem more volatile. If you look at head count, you'll see that it has remained within a few hundred students over the past several years. There is a pattern of slight increases up to 2020 than a slight decline since, but fluctuation here isn't going to be a big factor in overall enrollment. Putting all three of these pieces together, K-12, pre-kindergarten, and special education transition services brings us to Michigan's overall public school head count. The K-12 population accounts for over 96% of overall enrollment, so it's no surprise that the trend here looks similar to the trend we saw in K-12 and by extension, the overall census trends for 5- to 17-year-olds. That said, the magnitude and direction of the overall trend in the past few years has been sensitive to large swings in pre-kindergarten enrollment, and that was true in fall 2022 as well. Whereas K-12 head count fell by 0.6%, overall head count only fell by 4.4%. And this is the smallest year-over-year decline in overall enrollment in the years that we've tracked. So nuances aside, overall head count seems to be stabilizing towards pre-pandemic norms. But as we said, head count is just one measure of enrollment, and we can also look at patterns of students shifting into, out of, or within the public school system. So now I'm going to hand it off to Lauren to talk about some of these shifts.
Thanks, Mike. I will start with kindergarten enrollment because kindergarten was one of the big stories in both fall 2020 and fall 2021. Of grades K to 12, kindergarten saw the biggest drop in fall 2020 and the biggest increase in fall 2021. In fall 2022, the kindergarten enrollment dropped mildly, by 0.8%. Now, this is moving in a different direction than the steady increases we had seen from 2015 to 2019. But we're not talking 11% or 8% swings like we have in the past two years. That the change is only 0.8% suggests some stabilization. This will, though, be a trend to keep our eye on in the years ahead and maybe even to contextualize with birth rate data, developmental kindergarten trends, and some of those other factors. We've also kept an eye on the number of students entering public education in grades 1 through 12. These blue bars represent the number of students enrolled in a given fall who were not enrolled in the immediately preceding fall, meaning they were either new or returning to public education. You can see in the first bar on the left that there are about 47,000 entries in falls, on average, between 2017 and 2019. In the past two school years, then, first in 2020, we saw that drop by 20% below average. In fall 2021, we saw entries 20% higher than pre-pandemic average. Now, in fall 2022, we see a return toward the pre-pandemic average with this year's entries roughly about 10% higher than that 2017 to 2019 average. Here, too, additional data are needed to see where new and returning enrollments stabilize relative to pre-pandemic norms, but it does seem to be stabilizing. The last two slides talked about students coming into or entering public education. What about students exiting? The biggest shift at the start of the pandemic was in the number of students reported as exited to non-public and homeschool. For scale, remember that these students in falls 2018 and 2019 made up about a quarter of 1% of students reported each fall. 2020 did see an uptick, particularly in students exiting to homeschool, which is represented by the gray portion of these bars. In both fall 2021 and fall 2022, the number of students exiting to non-public and homeschool has fallen, though not yet back to pre-pandemic levels. Because this graph represents a point-in-time snapshot of the data, it doesn't account for the fact that a portion of these students do return to a public school. In pre-pandemic years, about 25% of exuders were expected to come back within a year. Of fall 2020 exuders, 40% returned to public school, a public school, within a year. And now I can tell you that in fall 2021, about 30% of these exuders returned within a year. So although we saw higher rates of exits, we also saw higher rates of return. Both of these metrics have slowed toward pre-pandemic patterns or levels of movement between these different arrangements. We've talked about shifts into and out of public schools. This slide now takes us to considering shifts within. Specifically, this slide depicts and breaks down that total head count. Specifically, this slide depicts and breaks down that total headcount by traditional and charter districts. Traditional district enrollment is represented by the blue bar, and you'll see that that's been declining over time. Headcount among charter districts, which is in yellow on this graph, has held comparatively stable. That brings me to the gray line, which is what I most want to call your attention to on this slide. This line represents the proportion of K-12 public school enrollment that is accounted for by charter districts. Prior to fall 2020, and in fact, all the way back to fall 2013, this proportion increased 0.1% on average each year. Notice, then, that the increase the past two years has also been 0.1% each year. So the jump we saw in 2020 seems to be a one-time interruption of an otherwise stable Another shift of interest has been the pattern of enrollment at full virtual schools, or those schools where all students receive all instruction virtually, whether at a charter or a traditional district. If you look on this graph at the green bars, you'll notice that the number of students enrolled in full virtual schools increased each year up to fall 2021. This year, we saw a decline for the first time, with full virtual enrollment falling by about 5,700 students. While not on this graph, I can share with you that this drop is concentrated in traditional districts, with full virtual enrollment at charter districts holding steady. Even so, both overall and if you break it down by district type, full virtual enrollment remains about double what it was in fall 2018. This will be another metric to keep our eye on in the years ahead. So to recap, what are the trends in enrollment data as of fall 2022? The 0.6% decline in K-12 enrollment mirrors population and pre-pandemic trends. We also saw stabilization toward pre-pandemic norms and other metrics we've been watching since fall 2020. We saw a less drastic change in kindergarten enrollment. We saw a closer-to-usual number of students entering or returning to public schools in grades 1 through 12. The drop in students reported as exiting to non-public or homeschool brings us closer to pre-pandemic levels. Looking at charter enrollment, we saw the same 0.1 increase that we've seen since 2013. And virtual enrollment did decline for the first time, but that brings us back towards pre-pandemic norms. We will continue to keep our eye on enrollment data in fall 2023 and ahead, and as Mike mentioned, we encourage folks to visit the My School Data website to dig into the data deeper.
Thank you to our presenters. We appreciate that. We're going to shake off the lunch stupor and move into questions and comments. Board members, questions and comments. We have Dr. Pugh, Dr. Robinson.
Actually, I think your summary kind of got to one of the questions that I had, and maybe you mentioned it earlier in the presentation, but being able to see what the general population trends are next to the school population trends would be helpful. You gave us, I think, the overall summary is that you're seeing similar trends.
Yes.
And then that would kind of, even in like the homeschooling numbers, like how, I was going to say sturdy, how that data that's there, can you really, how reliable is that data to really be able to show that students have gone to homeschooling?
I can take that question. Yeah. So we have the data that the districts tell us, and so when students exit to homeschool and districts are aware of that, they report it. And we did see that big increase in fall 2020, so districts were aware and were reporting it. Once a student is in a homeschool situation, data are only reported to the state if that student is somehow interacting with a public service, such as a shared time service. And so there is, we didn't bring it with us today, but there is data on that shared time services and the access of those available on My School Data as well. So the data that we get, we feel comfortable in bringing to you all here today, but the data that we don't get is the portion that we at SEPI can't really speak to.
Okay. And then you, I think you answered on Slide 14, you talked a little bit about the cumulative data.
Yeah.
I think something you said helped me a little better, but I guess if you could just repeat that or say that again, as far as what does this look like cumulatively?
Yeah, sure. So this, and thank you for asking that question. This slide is not cumulative.
Right.
This is a point-in-time counting of students that districts report to us as exited. What we didn't bring with us today, kind of visualized, is our looking at students that do come back within a year, so comparing this year's fall enrollment to last year's. And that's where, if we were to do that longitudinally over multiple years, you know, a researcher could get to maybe a cumulative total. We've not tried to go that deeply into it, but by just looking kind of one year to another, we can see that there's something different going on in the students that left in fall 2020 and fall 2021, because they do seem to be back within a public school at a higher rate than we would have expected based on pre-pandemic norms. In 2018, 2019, about 25% of those students would be reported again by a public district as truly enrolled, not shared time, as enrolled within a year. Compare that then to 40% of fall 2020 exceders and 30% of fall 2021 exceders. Does that help?
It is.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Dr. Robinson.
I just want to say that when you look at large data sets like this, the numbers are like drinking from a fire hose. And I just want to compliment you both and everyone else who's working with you there that, as I was going through your slides, I thought about six or seven questions of what I wanted to see, and you wound up getting to every one of those things, the ways to slice and dice the data. And I think what you've done, that's really hard to do with just data like this, is tell a story. And the story that you're telling to me is that we hit some bumps during the pandemic, we're starting to recover, but we need to keep a close eye on these trends. So congratulations, because that's a hard story to tell from that kind of information, and I think you did a really nice job with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Other reflections? Other reflections? Going once, twice, thrice? Mr. Millen? No? Okay. I thought I saw you tug on your earlobe. Any other reflections? If not, just a note on the homeschool data issue. I thought your answer was terrific. I would like to point out, though, that there are gaps. There are gaps in reporting. The reporting is optional, it's not mandatory, and it's only at the delta point, it's only at the decision point thereafter. No visibility associated therewith. And the inability to count clearly all buckets of education, public, private, parochial, and homeschool, means that we're unable to get a strong bead on the number of missing children in the state, which is why I've called and continue to call on the legislature to require accounting of every child in the state, just simply by their educational home, if you will. Public, private, parochial, homeschool, that's it. And we just simply need to know where our young people are, who's responsible for their education, so we know who's not being educated, what we need to do associated with him or them. So we appreciate your sharing, and this was painless. Please tell, please tell your, please tell your executive director that this is a pain-free moment in front of the State Board. If you would like to reply to it, certainly.
Yeah, certainly. The idea that the government needs to know where every child is, it's none of their business. If there's a missing child, the police will be called. We know that. Just because can't force them into a government school and, you know, some parents want to homeschool their kids doesn't mean that the government should be able to know exactly where they are and what they're doing. It's the parents that are the parents of the children, not the state superintendent. He is not daddy, although he does call them "our" children and his children sometimes. And so I certainly think it's none of their business to be counting, and we know that counting doesn't stop there. Programs lead to all kinds of other things. Once you, something is just counting, it often leads to more than that. It's usually the first part of licensing and government control. So it's not surprising that certain authoritarians want to be able to count, but I hope that that does not, it doesn't need to happen, and it shouldn't happen. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, State Don as well.
Board, it's 1:59. The next item on today's agenda is a presentation on surrogate parenting guidance and State Board of Education policy. This presentation will outline the request to rescind the State Board of Education's policy for the appointment of surrogate parents for special education services. The presenters will share on the history of the policy and rationale for rescission. Policy in question is no longer required under Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education, so-called MARS rules, and no longer aligns with federal law. At the conclusion of the presentation, the board will have an opportunity for discussion and questions, and will be asked to vote on or postpone a vote on its 2008 policy on the appointment of surrogate parents for special education services. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Scott Kenickneck, Deputy Superintendent of P-20 Systems and Student Transitions, Ms. Terry Rink, Director of the Office of Special Education, Ms. Rebecca McIntyre, Assistant Director of the Office of Special Education. This is an informational presentation. Again, the opportunity for a board vote thereafter, if the board feels ready for that. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you to the board for allowing us to come before you, seeking your approval to rescind a board policy that was passed back in 2008. And so, as Dr. Rice has said, I'm joined by Terry Rink, Director of the Office of Special Education, and Rebecca McIntyre, the Assistant Director of the Office of Special Education. And as we move through the presentation today, we thought it would be beneficial for Rebecca just to kind of do a quick summary of what surrogate parenting or surrogate parent term means under IDEA, as opposed to what most of us probably relate that to. They're two vastly different meanings. And so Rebecca's going to give just a quick highlight of what that means under IDEA, and then move into the presentation this afternoon.
Sure. Thanks, Scott. So I wanted to start by going back to the IDEA and what the IDEA is, and that it's a civil rights law that provides protections and entitlements to students with disabilities and their parents. The IDEA has a clear definition of what a parent is, which includes a biological or adoptive parent, a foster parent, a guardian, or another individual that a student with a disability lives with who is acting in place of a parent, and that can be like a grandparent, a stepparent. We usually refer to them as kinship caregivers. And then also, the definition of parent includes surrogate parent. And so what is a surrogate parent is actually defined further under the IDEA under 300.515, and that talks about the role of a surrogate parent, in that surrogate parents represent a student with a disability in all matters regarding identification, evaluation, placement, or a provision of a free, appropriate public education. And so that regulation also talks about who can serve as a surrogate parent, as well as how a surrogate parent is appointed. And so it's the how they get appointed and who can serve that we're going to be talking about today. Okay. So just to give a little bit of history, and we have them up here in the bullets, is that there is a State Board of Ed policy. It's 2008 is when it was developed and approved by the State Board of Ed. It was developed and approved as a result of a Michigan Administrative Rule for Special Education, which we refer to as MARS. That was in place at the time. Actually, we looked back, it predates all of us, but we looked back and found it as far as 2002, that there was a requirement language in there that a public agency would appoint a surrogate parent according to the procedures established and approved by the State Board of Education policy. And so that this policy for the appointment was developed because of those rules. There was a couple of things that happened. There was a information that was found where the State Board of Ed policy was contrary to the IDEA in terms of who can be appointed as a surrogate parent. And so because that was contrary to IDEA, and because there was previous executive order back to 1996 that transferred those administrative, administrative allowabilities from the State Board of Ed to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, the MARS rule was changed, and it removed the requirement for the State Board of Ed to have a policy, and it changed it to that a public agency would appoint a surrogate parent according to the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, in that specific 300.515. And so that's when that changed. As a result of that, the Office of Special Education created a guidance document that basically detailed the IDEA and called it Surrogate Parents and Special Education Decision-Making Guidance. And since that time, obviously, I'm going to go on to the next slide here, since that time, there were a couple of state complaints about a handful of years later. The state complaints were specific to surrogate parents. They were filed, one was filed by Disability Rights Michigan, which is previously Michigan Protection and Advocacy, and the other one was filed by Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And both complaints, different parts of the state, involved students who were living in residential programs and were needing of a surrogate parent. In both cases, well, in one case, there was a parent, that surrogate parent was appointed regardless of there being a parent present, and in the other case, an employee of the residential facility was acting as the surrogate parent. And those were both allowable by the State Board of Education policy. And so that's where, when we found that with our state complaint investigations, we knew right away that we had to, you know, take steps to correct that. We had to issue corrective action and violations to both districts in this case, and then we had to take steps to make sure that that was corrected. So specifically, we looked at a surrogate parent can never be appointed for any child with a disability when there is somebody who meets that definition of parent that I went over previously, and that surrogate parent cannot be an employee of Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, of any child placing agency, or a residential facility, a child referred to as child caring institutions. So any agency that's involved in that education or care of the child. So what the Office of Special Education did is we reached out to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Office of Education supports, and we took a look at the requirements of the IDEA, the board policy, the previous OCE guidance, as well as Michigan Department of Health and Human Services rules that they have to operate by. And we made sure that we had some very aligned thinking, understanding of each other's resources and requirements, and together developed another guidance document that we hope to be able to issue in place of this board policy. We'd be looking at rescinding this policy and, you know, pulling back and rescinding our previous 2015 guidance.
Can I ask a question really quick?
If we can finish the, fully finish the presentation, then we'll get into Q and A.
And so, just for some context, because we are nearly finished, we polled all 56 ISDs in terms of how often a surrogate parent is used to, in a sense, serve as the child's guardian and protect their rights through the special education process. And 51 ISDs responded, and there were 31 instances of the use of a surrogate through the special education process last year. So extremely rare that this would be used, but again, important to be a protection for our kids in the event that they don't have a parent that meets any of those other definitions. And typically, again, these students are awards of the state in most instances. And so with that, obviously, we have our contact information, both Terry and Rebecca and myself as well, and that concludes our presentation.
And important generally and statutorily as well.
Correct. Correct.
Required by federal statute. Okay, very good. Thank you so much, presenters. We appreciate you. Ms. Snyder.
So the policy, when you read it, says the MDE is the regulatory body that keeps the list, if you will, of surrogate parents according to that policy. So are you stating, did I hear correctly, that one of the complaints relates to the fact that a surrogate parent was an employee as a service provider, even though it was against the policy? Yeah. So MDE is the regulatory body that is supposed to manage the surrogate parents list within that policy? It is. If you read it, it is. But then you didn't actually do what you were supposed to do, so there was a complaint lodged, and now we're rewriting them?
So the Michigan administrative rules for special education actually place the surrogate parent requirement in ISD plans, and then ISDs in their ISD plans say who is responsible for the appointment of surrogate parents, and it's either on the local district, the intermediate school district, or both. So most typically, what you see is intermediate school districts will take that responsibility. They, through their parent advisory committee, will gather a pool of parents from around the county, and they'll have a pool for anybody in the ISD to draw from.
But this policy states that the MDE is the regulatory body for maintaining that list.
The state board of education policy.
It says Michigan Department of Education is the regulatory body and the receiver of the dollars for it. It's in the policy that you're asking us to rescind. So what I'm hearing is that Michigan Department of Education was not operating under the policy that this board had developed for them, and then had to entertain a complaint because it broke the rules that are within that policy. So now we want to undo that policy, and you guys are going to write a new one that suits the fact that it shouldn't have happened in the first place.
So the Department of Education is responsible for the general supervision of all the requirements under IDEA.
But if you read the policy, that's what it says.
But we have a rule that gave the obligation of maintaining a list of qualified surrogates to the ISD. So we work with ISDs to ensure that they have a list as part of their ISD plan, and that the parents that they are using are trained, and there's certain things they have to know to be able to function.
Who wrote that rule?
A MARS rule?
Yeah.
There's a whole process that is undertaken with public comment around the writing of MARS rules.
I think it's important to.
And the MARS rule specifically points back to the IDEA, and the IDEA spells all the requirements.
So should the board rescind the policy? We won't rewrite anything per se, because we'll just fall back on what IDEA says in terms of who the surrogate is and the processes and procedures there.
But the state board of ed passed a policy in 2008 that considered the federal law and the IDEA of what it looks like to provide fair and appropriate education to special education students, and that's what the MDE was supposed to be acting under and didn't. So now we have complaints that we're entertaining that relate to the breaking of that policy in two different areas. Two different areas being who actually determines the surrogate parents in the list, and then also how that's played out in the process. So, so now we're going to rewrite a whole policy when I'm just trying to figure out why, why we would do that? Why not just follow the policy that we had in place as it relates to providing special education?
Because it runs contrary of what's laid out in IDEA.
We wrote it in the foundation of IDEA at that time.
So state law can, states can do whatever they want to do, but they can't violate the federal law. The federal law sets the standard for what has to be followed, and states can do that in any number of ways. But if states write policies or pass legislation that violates the federal law, we have to defer to the federal law when we determine district levels of compliance. We have to use that as the standard, not the states.
Sure, yeah. I think that's where the policy was born from. And I mean, if you read through it, and then one thing, the pieces of information we don't have yet, which I asked for yesterday, were the original complaints. But instead, we were given a file that was a report that was filed on your guys' behalf and the corrective action report. So that's just one side of the conversation, right? When a, when a complaint's filed and we're asked to rescind a policy that was really put in place to protect special education students, we should have all of the information, including the complaint itself. But we don't have the complaint. I mean, I would like to read that complaint, or both of those complaints, and understand why rescinding this policy is a good thing for students. That's, I think it's important, because what we were sent was a redacted version of your guys', you know, summary of the, of the complaint.
What you were sent was a redacted version of the complaint resolution.
Which is your side of the story, not the complaint itself.
Which is, well, I mean, we're happy to share more substantially, too. Redact an entire file takes quite a bit of time. We're happy to do it. Whether or not it adds to a policy discussion is a question. I think to Dr. Kenickneck's point, however, that we move based on federal IDEA law, that that is the highest level of law, and we have responsibility to it, over state statute if the two are in conflict with one another, responsibility to abide by it if it is in conflict, if, if federal law and state board policy are in conflict with one another. I think that's what I just heard you say.
And they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that that's accurate. I think that's, that's one of the issues. But another one of the issues, too, that, that you're pointing out here, is, is the complaint of use? Yes, I think it is, because it's extremely important.
I'm sorry, is the complaint?
Will the complaint bring information to the table that's important for board members to have before they vote on something like this? I would say yes. It's important for us to know what it is that people are making a complaint about in terms of accessing IDEA, not just one side of the story of like, this is the process, the process changed, but the policy didn't reflect that, and we didn't follow the policy, and so now we want to change the policy, and, you know, no. We need to know what it is that brings access to these students, especially ones that don't have parents at home. Who is responsible for discussing what a surrogate parent is and how they are appointed, even if it's just 33 students, or 31 students, whatever you say?
Thirty-one.
So I think that's important for us to do, not just rescind the policy that we don't fully understand.
Two things.
And don't have all the information.
We're getting, we're getting a little, little, little loose now. If we could go through the chair, I'd appreciate it, please. Ms. McIntyre.
So just real quick, the 2008 policy that we're talking about, that was developed with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the understanding at the time was, because students, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services doesn't only serve students with disabilities, and so their policy is that employees of residential facilities can serve surrogate parents for students, general education students and children. But that, that is contrary to federal, and that's what wasn't considered at the time, and so that's where the board policy becomes a problem. It's because our ISDs have it written in their plan that they're going to follow board policy, and so that's where that comes from. I also want to just talk about state complaints and how they are written. So the first several pages of the complaint, you'll see that they are laid out as findings of fact. Those, that is information from both sides. So the complainant is, gives information, they give any documents that they have, they are interviewed, and then the same thing for the district and anybody, any other relevant information. That is all laid out in fact. So it's not just one side, it's both sides of the story. And then it goes into a conclusion. So based on those facts, and based on the IDEA and the Michigan administrative rule requirements and case law, this is the conclusion, and then this is our final decision. So, so you do have both sides in there. I can take a look at the, the main complaints that came in. My worry is the amount of redacting that might actually take away from the full thing, but I will, I can take a look at it.
I think we should have access to the original complaints, not what's compiled after you guys have had a chance to look at it, but just knowing where they're coming from originally in their own words. Yeah. You know, it's, it's 31 students, but they're the most vulnerable, and I think the way that we handle applying surrogate parenthood in those situations is an important thing, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Others? Ms. Lipton.
I'm, I'm not an expert in special education law, but before I went through the process of even redacting or disclosing the initial complaint, I might check to see, I'm not certain, there may need to be some sort of a disclosure or some sort of an affirmative allowance by the parties. I sort of look at these, they're, they're, they're not necessarily legal proceedings, but there may be some confidentiality concerns with even redacting. And I, I don't know, like I said, I'm not an expert in special education law, but there may be, I would at least consider possibly needing some sort of explicit permission to even share the initial document. I don't know if that's the case or not, but I would just be concerned that if you don't have that, there may be some problems afterward with just disclosing. So like I said, I'm not trying to serve as anyone's attorney, but I'm just maybe a cautionary, you know, statement on that, on that end. Based on the timeline that you suggested, is it possible that, number one, IDEA 300.515 perhaps changed to further define or clarify the definition, definition of surrogate parenting? Because in reading it, it strikes me that what they're really trying to do is make sure, in legal parlance, we talk about making sure that someone who's advocating for a child is not sort of, that they're truly independent, so that you're sort of fulfilling that best interest of the child standard. So it strikes me that the language of IDEA, whenever it came into being, either initially or through amendment or reauthorization, that they're really trying to get at this notion of making sure that whoever is put into that position is as independent as possible, not being an employee, that type of a thing. So it seems to me that, and, and just in the standpoint of what you follow, federal law always has to be followed first. So my second question is, is it possible that state law was passed requiring a state board of education policy being written without, without knowledge that the IDEA had already contemplated this sort of independent surrogate being? Because it strikes me that the policy is, is sort of trying to address something that IDEA in its clear language has already addressed, and generally speaking, you don't need a policy to clarify a federal statute that is clear.
Correct.
So I don't know, again, I, I'm not, I'm just contemplating that possibly the state law was passed requiring this bot, this former body, I mean, I wasn't there at the time, but in 2002, to create a policy without ever looking at IDEA and saying, oh, well, they've already actually contemplated a definition of, I don't know, is it possible that that happened? And that's why you have this sort of.
I think it had more to do, and this is total hypothetical, but, you know, I think it had more to do with trying to bring in the requirements of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
Oh, okay.
Because IDEA has not changed, to my knowledge, in one of the things that I shared with the definition of surrogate parent, it's very clear that is not an employee, and so of any.
So it's possible that the eight, the MDHHS ran afoul, or, it's reasonable that they might not have known about IDEA, or had taken the time to read it, or had their attorneys tell them that it's actually pretty clear in what it's asking. So, okay, there's probably some reason, but we might never know.
Could I just follow up on the redaction issue?
Please.
So when we have complaints that are filed from small communities, even when you redact, and to your, to your point, taking away personally identifying information sometimes is not enough when you can already determine who the child was, because there's so few children, and typically people can figure out who that child may have been. So redacting things is not always a good way around things, and I would agree that if we were going to do that, we would need to talk to these families, because they're from very small communities.
But the point in this case is they don't have parents.
Excuse me, if we could go through the chair, I would really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Finish your, finish your thought, because I think it's an important one about numbers and, and about inadvertently outing people who have a right to privacy.
Yes, and that is part of the concern whenever we're asked to redact things, is there's a context in which these communities have the same freedoms to do, pursue the civil rights protections. And when we make information available, when it's pretty easy to figure out who that family might be, we risk there, you know, revealing the identity of a child, and that's, that's why we, I think in these cases, in both cases, we would need to get permission from the parties, because they're both from small communities.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rink. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Snyder, back to you.
But we're talking about kids who don't have parents and whose surrogate parents have filed complaints with you. So it's, so, or, or the surrogate parent advocate has filed on their behalf, right? Okay. One of them, you said, had a surrogate parent that was not following the policy that we are trying to rescind. So the point being, for a, it's hard, you're using a policy that applies not to 31 kids who need accountability at this table. So to give information to the eight board members at this table so that we can effectively deliberate what it looks like to give them special education services is not a violation of privacy. It's a duty.
Okay. Well, we'll certainly reflect upon that. And Ms. McMillan.
You know, I guess, first off, I'm, I'm not an expert in all this. I asked for a bunch of documents and we got them. I generally, in a decision like this, I don't know if it's impactful or not, I mean, 31 student instances, could it be 131 next year? I don't know. I'm not, I guess I generally like to get information, put it out there for a month, and let people who kind of are experts, who might know how the rubber meets the road on this stuff, and then give, you know, I gave you an opportunity to let me know before I made a decision is generally a good fallback for me if I, in an area that I really haven't limited expertise, if any. So I want to say that. Two, as it was mentioned, you know, somehow that it's no longer required is, is the reason given why we can, should rescind this. I mean, it's just because the requirement is, is removed doesn't mean that it necessarily should be rescinded unless there's some reason, and so I, I guess I'm trying to understand, is it, so is it because of these two violations that this is coming before us today mainly? I mean, it should have come before, I guess, but it's being highlighted because of these two violations.
Right.
And these two violations existed because there's a difference between state board of education policy and IDEA?
Correct.
So why can't we just change state board of, SBE policy to align to IDEA? And would that, so, okay, that's one option, but it may not serve any purpose also, right? Like, why do it if we're going to do whatever IDEA says? So is there no benefit, I mean, are we giving up any, any decision-making or power, or is anything shifting? It's, so if we were to align the state, you know, I mean, we don't, I haven't, I've been on here for over six years and we've never been asked to rescind a state board of education policy. I don't, you know, and especially, I only had a couple days, or maybe the agenda was out, I just didn't see it for a few more days. But again, I guess I'm inclined to understand what you're saying. I guess, you know, I contacted people in this special education advocacy area, and they said, there's a problem, you know, and, or, you know, I'd like to understand more. I tried to understand and read things and quickly read things. During the meeting, I've been trying to read things about, or, you know, what I've been given. You know, to be honest, it just sounds like, you know, so, so somehow, an ISD had in their plan, instead of saying, do whatever the IDEA says, it's. it says, do what state board says. Couldn't they change it to say IDEA? Or, I mean, that was a question, but maybe there's 50-whatever of them and so maybe we're not sure if they're going to change them all. But again, I guess it's not every day that I even know we have a policy, very many policies. And to be asked to rescind one, I just am not, you know, like I said, I just don't know exactly, it sounds, as I articulated, it doesn't sound all that difficult. But I guess, you know, and if, and again, people within that area of advocacy had a concern doesn't necessarily mean that there is a significant concern, but, you know, being asked to repeal some, you know, remove something relatively quickly. Usually, I mean, in the legislature or in this body, we usually put something forward and then repeal it, and do something, action the next month or the three months. So I guess, that's my only thought. Is there any, the danger would be is tomorrow, if we don't rescind this tomorrow, somebody could, there could be another conflict and somebody could file a... But that ISD could change their own policy and say it's, we're going to be aligned to IDEA instead of SBE policy. They just kind of have it in their boilerplate and you're not sure where it's going to raise its head again, I guess. So the state board policy allowed for an appointment that shouldn't have been. The IDEA didn't say they couldn't. That's the only thing we're dealing with there. There's no other ramification with rescinding this at all.
And I don't know if it'll make you feel better or not, but like I said, you have the state board of ed policy and you have the OS guidance that are currently living documents. And the work group that was put together has worked to combine those. So the contents of the board policy, the correct contents are, we have this new document. It's called the Appointment of Surrogate Parents for Special Education and Early Intervention Services. And I can just read you a couple of highlights that make it a better document. First off, we removed policy out of it, but includes children birth to three. So we currently have nothing that addresses children birth to three. And in Michigan, we're a birth to 26 state. And so we also have nothing that addresses those students who are 21 to 26 years old. So the new document would do that. We also talk about, we are very clear...
Wait, I'm sorry, just because you're confusing me, the new doc, are we, are we going to approve some new document?
No, it's a guidance document. We took the state board of ed policy and the current Office of Special Education guidance document and we combined them. And we have a draft, we have a draft, it's a work group, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Michigan Department of Education. We have a few different offices within MDE that worked on that to make it more comprehensive, accurate, all within the alignment and confines of IDEA.
And that's going to get implemented whether or not we do anything here with the rescission. Or does that only come into being if we rescind? Well, see, now that makes me concerned. So our action is not just rescinding something, but it will be in effect giving authority to something you just said. I mean, that's going to come into...
We're simply creating a guidance document.
You said that that doesn't come into being or doesn't have any kind of authority unless we do this rescission.
It would be in conflict with the policy.
Correct.
So the guidance that we're prepared to release so the districts have a clear understanding of their obligations, we're waiting to see how the board chooses to address the policy. Because to your point, the longer the policy sits out for the public, the more likely there's a risk that districts could follow that and be in noncompliance. So ISDs have asked us to try to get that rescinded so that they can change their plans to align with IDEA. And then we would issue new guidance that gives all the accurate understanding of IDEA and also factors in Department of Health and Human Services.
Let me just, one quick follow-up, can we do that in the policy? Can we just change the policy to do that instead? Why does, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, we're an elected body and, you know, things seem to move from elected bodies to bureaucracies. And then people say, well, that's just the way it is, as opposed to, I'm going to hold you eight accountable. And so it just makes me, you know, it sounds to me now that something that we can be held accountable for is now moving towards a bureaucracy that we aren't held accountable for. If anybody has any concerns, they can't say, let's go to these eight. They have to say, let's go to this nebulous bureaucracy and try to fix it. I just, I don't know.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McMillan, Mr. Bullock.
Quickly for clarity, we have to rescind this to come into compliance with the federal guidelines, right?
That's correct.
In the store.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bullock. Other questions or comments? Ms. Snyder.
I'd move to table this until next month so that we have an opportunity to review the complaints, the original complaints, and be sure that this is what we should be doing.
Hold on, let her finish her, let her finish her motion, please. Go ahead.
I'm moving to table this vote so that we can get the original complaints and have an opportunity as board members of a policymaking body to deliberate effectively.
Your motion is to...
Table this until next month at least, potentially longer.
Okay, point of clarification.
For the point of order, I don't know, it's a friendly amendment to change how you make, your motion has to be to postpone it to next month.
That is correct. That a table, table is to a date uncertain, postponement is to a date certain. So would you...
I'll stick with tabling it.
You just got to postpone it.
Uncertain, until we can get the complaints.
Okay, so we have a motion to table it to a time uncertain. Motion to postpone, motion to table to, that is to say, to time uncertain, without specificity associated with next month. There's the motion, do we have a second?
You need a second?
You do.
Okay, I'll second it.
So do you have a second?
May I speak to it?
Please.
We're talking about developing a guidance without this board, which is a policymaking board of individuals who need to deliberate on information we have not yet gotten. And the outcome is a regulatory set of bodies that will determine surrogate parents for birth through 26. For vulnerable individuals in our state, it's worth hitting pause.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a...
Since you're allowing discussion on a tabling motion, which you're not supposed to, but since you're allowing it, you can, you know, the body can take it off the table. They can put it on, next month we can take it off by a majority vote.
That is, that is true. And by the way, it's not a tabling motion, it's a postponement motion to Mr. Bullock's point of order. So it, we have a motion, we have a second. Actually, you know what? I take that back. It is strictly speaking a tabling motion, motion second, and we'll vote on her tabling motion. And then if someone wants to vote on a postponement to next month, that is a separate vote that board members can vote on. And they can determine whether they want to vote on this in order to postpone and put pause to time certain as opposed to the vote here, which is a postponement to time uncertain. So we have a motion on the floor, we have a second regarding a tabling of the motion, okay? And so there is no time certain associated with it. Please, roll call vote.
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pew?
No.
Robinson?
Nope.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so would someone like to move, so move to postpone until next month? So we have a movement to postpone to vote to next month?
Support.
So support. Any discussion associated therewith, hearing none. Roll call vote, this is a motion to postpone this till next month's board meeting.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Anybody is a good thing. We have the report of the president at 2:39 PM.
That would be me. Just a note that this is April. April is Autism Awareness Month as well as National Stress Awareness Month and probably something else, but those are two that I will just pull out and just making note as it relates to national stress awareness. This is an opportunity for us to acknowledge the impact of stress and making sure, Tom, you smile, well, making...
You do stress me, I know you do.
Yeah, but we're going to manage it, right? We're going to manage it. And we have our backroom breaks where we help to manage each other, or put things away for a moment. So, and then looking at Autism Awareness Month, and I think I can share this, I don't think my young cousin Sebastian would mind this, but this weekend I had the opportunity to share time and space with my soon-to-be seven-year-old cousin Sebastian and just really having opportunity to talk to his grandparents and who are my first cousins and just thinking of some of the conversation that we had earlier today. And just thinking of how parents and grandparents, loved ones, are having to cope and deal with the needs of all children. Of course, some children have special needs, but really having the time to spend with him and listen to the special moments that they've had with Sebastian and how they came to dropping the stigma around autism and also learning to address some of their, meaning his grandparents, some of their issues, I think was the main point that we talked about there in being able to interact and have Sebastian as a grandson. So really just looking at autism, making sure that we use these, whatever times that we have and we thank the regional teachers and the teacher of the year and others who bring these topics before us. But whatever moments that we have to learn more about people who are different from us is a good thing and just thinking about, again, Autism Awareness Month. Unfortunately, we've had additional shootings in this country and our thoughts and prayers do definitely go to the families and the educators in Tennessee, in Nashville, Tennessee. We also know that we have to call for action. We are happy to know that Michigan has taken action since we last met on some of the bills that are before, were before the legislature. And we know that the governor will soon sign some of those bills. There's still some pieces that we know that we need to push for action on around the emergency risk protective order in particular, but definitely happy to see the safe storage moving and universal background check for all firearms. And knowing that safety or greater opportunity for that safety is on the way. Definitely would hope that they would be implemented sooner rather than later. Mitch and I had the opportunity to participate in a MyPass event, I think that was last month, I mean, that last week, last week, and had an opportunity to talk about with Ms. O'Day and the lieutenant governor and members of MyPass parents about the opportunity for us to have more tools and educators and parents having more tools at their disposal. In particularly, we talked about tutoring and again, hoping to see the proposed budget be passed and also making sure that we're looking at supplemental budget as well and pushing for that. And I know Dr. Rice, he'll probably hammer on that again. Had the opportunity to be in Kalamazoo, your backyard, Dr. Rice. I was reminded to call you on my way to your backyard, just in case you saw me out there. But had an opportunity to meet with residents of Kalamazoo, Michigan yesterday and talk education, so, and really enjoyed that opportunity. So those are just awesome points that I wanted to bring up. And I think that ends my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pew. We're at the report of the state superintendent. I want to congratulate the 2023-2024 Regional Teachers of the Year announced yesterday. Region one, Gina Peppin, a reading teacher at Lemer Elementary in Eskenaba area public schools. I don't know Ms. Hanson, if you by any chance might know her.
I do.
Region two, Ms. Brandy, I'm just teasing. Region two, Brandy Clark, a mathematics teacher at Calcasca Middle School and Calcasca Public Schools. Region three, Stephanie Nielsen, a kindergarten teacher at Shawmut Hills Academy in Grand Rapids Public Schools. Region four, Bridget Sova, a special education teacher at HH Dow High School in Midland Public Schools. Region five, Jennifer Senk major, a fourth grade teacher at Yale Elementary School and Yale Public Schools. Too bad we don't have our former state board president here to shout out at her alma mater. Region six, Nicole Minor, a mathematics teacher at Lansing Eastern High School in Lansing School District. Region seven, Jamie Hlaskey, a mathematics teacher at Schoolcraft Junior High, Senior High School in Schoolcraft Community Schools. Region eight, Lori Reichert, a second and third grade teacher at Child's Elementary in Lincoln Consolidated School. Region nine, Vanessa Robert, has to have a French background somewhere there. A kindergarten teacher at Canton Charter Academy in Canton. And region 10, Candace Jackson, a third grade teacher in Mann Learning Community in Detroit Public Schools Community District. These 10 Regional Teachers of the Year will be competing for the Michigan Teacher of the Year honor, which will be announced next month. I want to shout out to the state legislature in addition to the Regional Teachers of the Year, that the state legislature has gotten off to an enormously impactful first 100 days. In many ways, it's an optimistic moment. That said, as we have discussed previously and as Dr. Pew just mentioned, the state legislature needs to pass an education budget supplemental quickly this spring for four major reasons in advance of passage of the state budget. The first, as Dr. Kenick Schneck and Mr. Lauer mentioned a few hours ago, we need to facilitate GSRP expansion. And we're not going to get it done with the current flexibility. We need to have more flexibility with the dollars already appropriated. To facilitate the expansion of our Great Start Readiness Preschool Program, which the governor and legislature negotiated $202 million in the last two state budgets, for which Mr. Bullock, as Senator Bullock, voted yes. The legislature needs to provide more flexibility to incentivize GSRP programs to expand their instructional weeks from four days to five days, their instructional years from 30 weeks to 36 to 38 weeks a year, to expand GSRP transportation and to incentivize and accelerate the development of GSRP teaching staff. We cannot get it done with the current flexibility. The state legislature needs to give us that flexibility in order to do what it asks us to do in the first place with those funds, which is to expand GSRP preschool so more young people in the state get an extra year of instruction in our public schools. School districts need this legislative flexibility immediately, given that the spring is the ideal time, not simply for kindergarten student roundup, Dr. Cornell, but also pre-kindergarten student roundup as well. Parents are shopping now for schools for their children for next school year. Help us help them with more flexibility. Please, state legislature, pass a budget supplemental. Reason two is the My Kids Back on Track program. It's something our board president just mentioned. The governor's executive budget recommendation calls for $300 million for the My Kids Back on Track program. This is critical for the provision of tutors and other support for those children who have substantial unfinished learning, Dr. Chapman, in the wake of the pandemic. This is not necessarily important for every child because every child isn't behind in their education, isn't below grade level, but it's so critical for those that are. And our school districts need to know that the money is secure now so that they can plan program in summer and fall. And to get those dollars in, to get... program in summer and fall. And to get those dollars in, to get those dollars approved in June, signed into law in July and distributed in the fall means that they don't ultimately become programmed for young people until the winter often. And that's not timely relative to our kids' needs. So it's really critical that we accelerate the approval of some of these dollars, not simply the GSRP expansion dollars. And by the way, those have already been approved. It's simply the flexibility we're talking about here, but the My Kids Back on Track funding. The third reason we need a supplemental, Dr. Golzinski, is associated with free meals for all children. The governor's executive budget recommendation calls for $160 million to help provide meals for all children. Free meals help to ensure that fewer kids go hungry, more kids are healthy, more kids can focus on their schoolwork. Through a supplemental, schools can be better prepared for the menu planning and additional food orders needed, bringing on more staff, ensuring effective communication with families. Contrary to popular belief, this is not simply add water and stir. We are talking about a major increase in our meals program. You have to plan for that major increase in that meals program. Help us feed more kids and improve student achievement at the same time. Help us pass a budget supplemental. And then finally, the fourth reason that we need a budget supplemental is the My Climate Plan Healthy Schools Grant Program. The governor's executive budget recommendation calls for $300 million for the My Climate Plan slash Healthy Schools Grant Program to improve, Dr. Pew, air and water quality in school. That's an amen moment for you.
Amen.
As we emerge from a pandemic, we're placing outdated heating and ventilation systems with more modern heating, ventilation and cooling systems, with more frequent air exchanges and addressing issues of lead and asbestos should be a priority. We shouldn't be talking about other kids' schools. This should not be in any kids' schools that we have issues of air and water quality. To have these funds appropriated in the early spring permits capital work on schools to be designed in the summer, RFPs to be put out in the fall, contracts awarded in the winter, with work taking place in the summer of 2024. Waiting to approve this important program in the fiscal year 24 budget means that funds aren't available until the fall with a diminished likelihood of summer 2024 projects and a greater likelihood of summer 2025 projects, Mr. Howe. Help us improve air and water quality in schools for students and staff. Pass a budget supplemental, state legislature. We appreciate what you've done to date. You've had an enormously impactful first 100 days. We look forward to the gun safety laws, which are going to be signed, the gun safety legislation, which is going to be signed into law soon. But we are so hopeful that in addition to the enormously impactful work that you've already produced in the first 100 days, that you're able to get a budget supplemental done quickly to help us in these four critical areas. Years ago, the legislature began to approve budgets in June, Dr. Kennedy, at the time a major improvement for schools over the late summer budget passage. I think then Representative Lipton and then Representative McMillan were in the state legislature at the time. Now, the legislature needs to raise the bar again to pass certain elements of the budget earlier so that they can begin to benefit students more in the coming months rather than in the coming years. Thank you very much for, for your attention to that important theme. Board members, it is 2:53 and we are at one of our favorite elements of the budget, if we can in fact have favorites. The next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update at 2:53. Mr. Marty Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will lead the state and federal legislative update, followed by Dr. Pritchett's voluminous State Board of Education Legislative Committee update.
Three things.
And Dr. Robinson's filibuster on NASB. Gentle people.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. In reference to the theme set earlier today, I may not be short, but I certainly will be sweet. So the legislature, like you mentioned, has been very busy. They had a two-week break, a spring break, and now they're back at it. There are some bills that'll be moved on quickly, and I'll give you a brief summary of what those are. The Cursive Writing Bill has been reported out of the House Committee on Education this morning, as was Senate Bill 63, which is, would allow schools to use their sinking funds for school vehicles. That was also reported out of House Education this morning. So those will be moving quickly on the floor into passage. The A through F repeal bill, House Bill 4166, passed the House 63 to 45, and now will be taken up in Senate Education Committee on Thursday, and is expected to be reported out. House Bill 4157 on school attendance that would excuse a student for the purpose of sounding taps at a military honor funeral for a deceased veteran was reported out of the House Committee in late March and is on the House floor awaiting action. The Teacher and Counsel Reciprocity Bills, both Senate bills have passed out of committee and are now sitting on the floor of the Senate awaiting action. So we expect that those, those will be moving also. There are two bills, Senate Bill 88 and 89, called First Filter Bills for Childcare Centers and Schools, to require the installation of water filtration systems in childcare centers and in schools. The bill has been reported out of the, those bills have been reported out of the Senate Committee on Energy and Environment and await action on the Senate floor. And the House versions of those bills also have committee hearings on Thursday. In regards to the full budget for the fiscal year 2324, the education budgets are being developed in both the House and Senate with the intention that they be voted out of their appropriations subcommittees this week. So action is moving quickly on the full budgets for the next fiscal year. And bills to amend the educator evaluation laws are close to being introduced and still may be this week. Those bills are expected to return educator evaluations back to local level, removing any attachment to state assessment results, and include a due process appeals opportunity. So we expect those to move once they are introduced as well. The Senate, I mean, I'm sorry, the State Board of Education Legislative Committee meeting, met on April 23, and I will hand it over to Dr. Pritchett for a report on that wonderful meeting.
Yes, it was. Thank you, Marty. Present at the meeting, present being via Zoom, was Dr. Robinson, Mr. Bullock, Ms. Snyder, Dr. Rice, Marty Ackley, Cheryl Kennedy, Olivia.
Ponti.
Thank you. Jen Cook and myself. And staff brought us up to date on many of the bills that Marty has just talked about. We did discuss at the meeting the use of American Indian Mascots Resolution that was passed by this board in 2003. We did have public comment on that last month. And so we did have a discussion about that. And in trying to be as collaborative as we can, we decided to share that resolution from 2003 with the Intertribal Council, of which the state has a partnership. And we are still awaiting comments from that group. So that resolution is still pending. We've not shared it with the committee until we hear back from the Intertribal Council on that. So possibly next month. We're hoping to hear back from them in the next couple of weeks. The other issue we talked about was the legislative luncheon, which this board has done in the past, though we had a break during COVID, obviously. It has been recommended by the committee that we hold off on that luncheon until September. I think it was Mr. Bullock who said, well, that makes sense because it's kind of the beginning of school and we could, our concern was because it is so busy this time of the year for the legislature, we just heard how busy they are, plus we know budgets need to be passed, that we were concerned about getting good attendance at the luncheon. And so we've decided that we will look at that on a September date, possibly change the location. In the past, the legislators have come here. We found a room here in this building. We were thinking about possibly going to the Capitol Building and meeting them there so they don't have as far to come because of Senate meeting at 10:00 and House meeting at 1:00 or 1:30. Possibly we can catch them in between their two sessions. So, and that's it. Our next meeting is April 26th, 12:30.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Robinson?
Attended the NASB Legislative Conference, learned a lot, enjoyed a lot. Maybe we can talk more about it at the retreat. I will reclaim my time at a later date, not believing in the filibuster.
Very good. Here's to you, Dr. Robinson. Comments by State Board of Education members, 2:59 PM. Ms. Lipton?
Thank you. I would just like to uplift our high school seniors. It's no secret. I've told many of you that I'm involved in the statewide Association of Promise Zones. So that gives me the opportunity to go into various high schools. This is a really exciting time in high schools with all of the spring fever. There's also the, the fever of College Decision Day coming up in May 1. I'm happy to say that our Promise Zone communities are working really hard toward helping us all as a state achieve both the governor's 60 by 30 goal, but also this body's goal that was adopted before I joined this body, which is to increase post-secondary attainment. And the excitement is there. And like I said, just speaking on behalf of our Promise Zone communities, our students are, are doing great and anxiously awaiting college acceptances and working with us to make sure that they have the funds to pay to go to and get their post-secondary credential.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you sharing that, Ms. Lipton. Other, other board members and board member comments? Go on, what, Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank again the students, the young people this morning who started the meeting off. Truer words have never been spoken. They will lead us, all of those comments. I was very, very impressed with the maturity, with the thoughtfulness, and am very happy that they are representing the young people here in Michigan at this point. Their thoughts and insights, I think, certainly were framed in a way in which I think we can all learn from. And the other thing I wanted to mention, you're right, Ms. Lipton, it is spring fever. And along with that, for the seniors comes, everybody else is into testing. They're M-stepping and they're SAT-ing and they're PSAT-ing, et cetera. And so districts are busy adjusting schedules in schools. And so for the next two or three weeks, they will be involved with that. And so we send our best wishes to them. It can be mind-boggling sometimes, depending on the size of the building and who's moving where. So at least the weather's nice. So we don't have to worry about snow days, except in the UP, right? And that's all I've got. Thanks.
The, the verb M-stepping doesn't, doesn't work quite as well as the verb to meet.
Yeah.
We just grow on you. Any other comments by state board members? Dr. Pew?
There was a parent during public comment who talked about a child with epilepsy and just wondering, I think that they said that they had their comments in writing maybe, and getting those. And if there's ever any opportunity, I'm thinking as we plan upcoming meeting with MDHHS, and maybe this ties in to some of the other conversations that we've had about making sure that we know how to, that our education system and educators or people in our buildings, in the buildings are able to respond to life-threatening matters. Maybe that's an opportunity for us to have that conversation added to that.
When she, and she was promoting particular legislation as well.
Yes.
And wanted us to lean into that. So I think that's something that we take up in legislative committee and, and reflect upon it. We, we should, there should be greater first responder capacity in our, in our schools, as a matter of course. So I think that's, that's something we'll pick up in legislative committee and maybe something that then we lift up here at the full board table. Anything more?
I think that was, I think that was it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Taylor? No? Other board members? No? Okay. Board future meetings are May 9, May 16, and June 13. May 9 and June 13 are regular meetings here at 9:30. May 16 is a work session, 9:30 AM at Camp Tuzmahida in Greenville, Michigan. There is no state board meeting in the month of July. If there are any topics board members would like included in the future meeting agendas, please notify Ms. Evans or me. It is 3:05 PM. Enjoy the good Michigan weather. Thank you.